All right, well, good evening and welcome to Waseca Public Schools Work Session for August. Today is Thursday, August 3rd, 2023. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. So tonight, we have three items on our work session agenda, beginning with the school board goals. So I know you guys have all been thinking about these goals for the last several months, but we have up on the board last year's goals that kind of inspire us. And then we also, Eric shared the three-year governance work plan, which we can also discuss.
And I have hard copies of that if anybody wants one for tonight, too.
I'll take one, too, because it's a little quicker. So we can always start with the governance. We can always start with this, because if there's any changes or additions or...
Yeah, I know that after our last work session, Dr. Allen was able to, she just typed up kind of what we came up with on the board there, and that's, looks pretty reflective to me and what we talked about, or you all talked about, I should say, in your work session. And so if there's changes you'd like to make to this, we certainly can. Otherwise, if that reflects what you talked about, that's okay, too. But I also thought it would, might be a launching pad for what you want to talk about for your goals for upcoming year.
My only questions were down under public engagement, where we have table at the fair, and then she put pictures or QR code. And I don't think that that, I don't know if that was really meant to be part of, I think our table at the fair had QR codes for like employment. I don't know if that was really intended to be, we would have some kind of QR.
Table at the fair is probably the entire statement?
I think so. Am I correct? Or did you, I think you mentioned, I can't remember who mentioned QR codes, but I think it was just that there was, that was for like employment or something. And then the photos were awesome, but that was Caitlin that did that.
Can we, can we make any suggestions?
Of course, yeah.
How about having a, and I was reading some of our board self-evaluations, and I don't know quite how to phrase this, but it would be like a get-to-know-each-other-team-building exercise. And I don't know exactly what I mean by that, or who would do that with us or for us or facilitate that. But would that be something that we could do?
It's a challenge, because it would have to be an open meeting. So it's, it's not the, not the most organic thing to do.
Yeah, I just noticed that on the board, you know, our self-evaluations, not all the time, but there was a number of times when people said, "I would like to get to know the other board members better."
Yep.
So how do we, how do we do that? And then I thought about, well, we are a team.
Right.
Combine that with a team-building exercise, or whatever, just...
Yeah, my experience is that it, board members are all so busy, lives are so busy, that to have a meeting just for that, that's a public meeting, tends to sometimes feel a little bit contrived, a little bit trying to get through. However, if, if I also...
Could you combine it with something else where...
Well, you also could. We could start our work sessions with something that's...
Only if you give five minutes slot to this work session on a topic about what you, everybody, if you feel somebody wants that, to kind of get out of everybody here.
I don't have...
That would, that would save you another meeting and throw in five more minutes or whatever.
Sure.
Incorporate as part of our work session, maybe like a, we call it grounding in our meetings, not, so it does, it feels a little bit more official. That way, it kind of gets our mindset for the evening we have ahead of us. We certainly could work some of that. I don't know if that would be a goal, a work plan here, but it would still work into it.
I was just thinking more on the concept or something like that.
Okay.
Or does that mean we have to, outside of an official set of goals, as individuals, say, "I'm going to call you for lunch," or, you know, that's, right, that's outside of an official thing, but it may still accomplish some of the same. But that, of course, requires our own commitment to that.
I think adding, yeah, five minutes of a grounding, something, it's like a work session, or I think that would, that's doable. But I don't, yeah, I don't know if that has to be part of the, it would just become practice. I don't know what needs to be on the agenda.
And also, then it becomes a little bit more customizable to each of our personal, you know, preferences. You know, some people want to share a ton of what's going on outside of here, some people might not. And then you've got that, you can kind of flexible, make that flexible as we go.
Cool, yep. Yeah, so we can, we can definitely add that just as practice and just see how it goes for a while and stuff. So I was wondering, in school year 24, 25, again, under public engagement, why it's different than in the other two school years?
Missing a few.
You could, you could carry, I think what we did is we included the things that, there are some specific things that are specific to that school year. We have a school board election, we have a hundred-year celebration. If there's thank you cards, if there's other things that just need to be copy and pasted, we certainly can move them over.
Well, I was just, basically, I was looking at, I'm like, we're still going to continue to have meetings on social media. And so it was just, I just thought it was funny to include it in the other two years and then not in that year.
We're having a fair table that year?
It's probably, it's probably an oversight, that, just kind of moving that over.
I just didn't want it to go into something that we vote on and then, because we would approve this at our regular meeting, right? Or do we need to...
Yeah, if you choose to, you don't have to.
Otherwise, we can just have it as our working document, yeah. And then on the backside was, what she had summarized as the hopes for the district and why we're on the school board, which these are kind of good things, just to keep us grounded is a good word, I guess. Any other comments or...
On the front side, too, I did notice the coffee with the superintendent with the board member in two years. I thought that was a good, great idea.
Yeah, and that's part of, that's why it's here. Otherwise, if it wasn't, if it wasn't with you, it wouldn't be on this document.
Right.
Right, and so that sort of thing. So it probably actually should be in this next school year, too. We incorporate some of that into those coffee with superintendents, where it'd be that, that piece.
Anything else that we feel is missing or is misinterpreted or...
Okay, and as the, as, we'll get to a vision, a vision card draft, I'll show you is our third agenda item for tonight. But as we bring to you the operational plan that the leadership team is creating here for the next three years as well, when you put these two things side by side, it'll pop out even more as, okay, this is the accountability, the policy work. You're holding myself and all of us accountable for the work that we have on the operational plan. And that really helps everybody kind of just feel good about, we have the strategic plan we're all working towards, and this is my role in it. This is my role in it. So, but I also thought it was valuable for this conversation, not to derail your goal conversation, but to supplement the goal conversation. If there's anything on here that you feel this upcoming school year is a point of emphasis that would be valuable to including your goals, it might be worth discussion. These are just last year's, so for reference.
Well, and I think it's important to, from last year's, I mean, some of our categories were based on the previous strategic plan, vision, the focus areas. And obviously, your strategic roadmap has changed those focus areas a little bit or consolidated. So we might want to rethink what our categories for goals are, too. So, so the priorities for this coming year are learning for all, community engagement, not coming year, coming strategic plan, learning for all, community engagement, efficient and effective use of resources, and ensure a safe and welcoming environment.
And I think even within though, you think, within those, you think about district policy, operations, oversight, board development, superintendent relationships, and public engagement as being those big governance tasks that you're taking on to meet those, the attention of those focus areas.
And also, just because we had four goals last year, we don't have to have four goals. We could have one, we could have three, we could have eight. But, so I had shared with Eric that I'm on, while being on the professional growth and development committee, one of their focuses as staff for their professional development this year is to focus on diversity. And I wouldn't, I think it'd be kind of, it'd be cool if the board in some way also had some kind of diversity, professional development, and just even like, how does, how is diversity seen in our district and policy? Or, I mean, an overview of curriculum, not necessarily, our job is not to create curriculum, but we should know what's going on, that kind of stuff. So I thought about like, maybe some kind of diversity, kind of professional development might be interesting, just because our staff is doing that this year. So, that's just, that's one thing I wouldn't mind seeing, but I'm open to other ideas. And then I shared with all of you the, my newsletter idea, which could be part of community engagement. And I'm open to what that actually looks like. It was just a suggestion for being a little, doing community engagement differently as the board, so.
I like that, because it's another avenue. I mean, we've talked about various things, and it's one more way that maybe hits another people, additional people.
I liked what you wrote up for Facebook. I thought that was good, appropriate, a lot of good information.
Well, the challenge of what I did is can't, it can't come from the same person all the time, because then it's, here's Julie's update every, every month. Like, we don't want that. I mean, I'm certainly happy to help facilitate it and stuff, but it'd be better if it was a collaborative effort from the board. But it doesn't have to be all seven of us necessarily, either. It could be, you know, a couple, you know, this month, a couple of different people another month. It's, so.
The letter that you sent it to us would be on Facebook?
Well, it could be, so it's a newsletter, we post it on the board, we post it on the board website, and then the school district could share it on their social media pages.
As a link?
Yeah, a link, or it could be a PDF or a JPEG or whatever, however. And then, yeah, and then we could reshare it if we want. So rather than each of us having to use our personal social media for that stuff, then the district would share it on behalf of the school board, and then we could choose to what we do from there. But then also, it would be on the website, too, so.
And what, what would this provide that, what we already have for social media or website availability from our district, what would that provide that we're not, through all that?
It's just another way to share the same information. So, I mean, I think, right, and it's a summary. I mean, we certainly, on social media, we, our meetings are broadcast. Our agendas are available on our website, our minutes are available on our website. It's not that the information isn't out there. It was just, it's just a summary of these, and then also what we as a board choose to highlight. So it's a summary, but also a highlight. So, because obviously, I didn't share everything that we did in our last two meetings, but I did highlight things that I thought might be of interest, so.
One of the things, and then we talked about as a, as a committee, was some of the summary of the meeting I talked about, but also highlighting some of the positive recognitions that you all give during your meetings, because that oftentimes gets spoken. And if, and if you're not watching the Facebook meeting, you might not have known that you got a shout out or got any call of that particular night. And we try to include that in our district newsletters every so often, but that's internal. Those are still internal emails, our monthly, or our bimonthly newsletters that Caitlin sends out. And so that might be an opportunity in this write-up to just say, and board members, by the way, recognized.
Right. I think short and sweet is going to be good. Like, looking at this, it's five pages. I have so much to read every day. I mean, and, you know, I know that I'm already here for this, but, you know, like those recognitions, I'm thinking like, a graphic, where you could just like plug in, where it's repetitive every month. You have just this graphic that you share on Facebook, like, you know, kudos to blah-bity, blah-bity, blah. Like, these are who was called out at whatever. And that, that could be posted every month. And then you could also do just like, very short and sweet, like, we talked about, you know, with bullet points, watch our meeting, our live stream for details. But like, to have a board member write this up every month, I mean, that's five pages.
And it doesn't have to be the same way every month. This is me, and this is how I do things, but yeah.
Well, and what I'm saying is, like, you're going to lose people. And if we're trying to put more information out there, it needs to be short and sweet and very generic and to engage some conversation, if they want it. Or, oh, they're talking about, you know, the K through six building, I'm going to go back and watch that one. All they need, you know, otherwise, they see that meeting and they don't pay attention to what's in it. And so if they see this, my concern is that it's not really going to reach that other group of people. It's going to be another, like, I'm not reading five pages, but if you see the five bullet points, that this is what they're talking about, that's going to be where they are like, oh, I'm going to skip to, you know, item number three on there and look at that, because that's relevant to me.
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is that the format potentially has some room for discussion of what should be the right fit to get the most engagement. But does the concept of adding this extra communication from the board seem like something that the board would be interested in working on as we get into that? Because remember, this is a board goal, which means you don't necessarily have to have it right by September.
No.
You're setting this for your goal for yourself. And one of the things that I, when I think about communication, I think about the number of people who say they never heard of something, that it's in 17 different places. And so this is just number 18. So we're not necessarily trying to recreate the wheel. We're trying to then increase another opportunity. I mean, I send those snow day messages out in the morning, I mean, in hieroglyphics. I mean, like, every possible way someone could know that we don't have school that morning, and someone still misses it sometimes. So the point is that I think the format could be up for modification. We try it one way one month, try it one way the different month, because we don't have, it's not like we have to have this perfect. That's why it's a goal, to figure what we want to do.
And it doesn't have to be the same in every place, like the, it could be a little bit longer format on our website, and then bullet points using social media or something.
Right, so those bullet points could point them to either, like, a document or a video, or their preferred method. Because I think everyone, I mean, yes, I don't disagree, you might, you might lose some people with a longer method, but you might also engage other people with... Well, and so if, also in those, like, where the recognitions and positive board feedback, again, if you have those up on a graphic as bullet points, that's really easy, like where it says, "Thanks to Coach Turek for his, and his coaching staff for the strength and conditioning class." If you have those, like, you know, this is who was recognized, they're going to share that, because that's relevant to them, and they want their family to see that, too, that they're doing good things. And so your reach, then, is more, because the things that get shared on social media are personal. That's, that's what's shared. So if we want it to reach more people...
So I'm taking notes. And I'm taking notes, and what my notes right now from as a community engagement goal. And community engagement fits both our strategic directions, community engagement, but it's also one of your key roles as board members. So it fits both of those opportunities. I think about, I just wrote board newsletter and recognition update. And I'll wordsmith that into a document here, we can send out. And they'll talk about the key measures would be, you know, a monthly communication that's going out from the board. It's kind of what that comes down to.
Yeah, I basically also said, yeah, goal, community engagement, and then I said, increase board communication using social media. And then, yes, there's, we can, there's...
Well, if you're, if you're typing on yours, I'll, I'll take notes, we can compare.
Exactly. It'd be good to have more than one. But, yeah.
And even if what we talked about at the meeting is almost just like, five points from the agenda that were the most things, because then somebody looks at it and says, all right, okay. Or they're looking and say, oh, I really wanted to know about that. They know then to go look at the video.
The bullet point triggers them, and then they know to go dig it.
It's either relevant to them, this meeting is, or it's not, and they know whether they should be watching it, because it's a lot for people to sit down and watch an hour stream.
Also, in community engagement, we should probably, I mean, somehow tie into some of your goals as, to, as far as like, working with you more on some of your community engagement kind of stuff, or...
Yeah, so if you want to get into like superintendent support, when you think about that superintendent relations and development focus area, I mean, when you think about the board, the goal of engaging in community conversations with the superintendent, maybe something to put that way. And as part of my goal was to invite you more into those conversations, your goal is to answer when I call. That kind of thing, right, when that kind of piece, so. And board operations and development is kind of the fancy governance way of saying, board training. And so when you think about, is there anything you want to learn about? As were, whether it's diversity, whether, anything else. We worked into last, well, like, it was last year, various board recommended topics. We ended up last spring having a big meeting about how curriculum works and those kind of things. So there's things that you want to learn about. I mean, maybe it's as, is just as general as that, or recommended topics, or there are specific things you know you want to focus on. I can try to find some ways to incorporate those into our work sessions. That's okay, too. But I think the most important thing is, this is where we, three years ago, we kind of started moving towards this, was, remember, this is about, this, this document is about what the board does, not about overseeing what the district does. So when you think about, I remember last couple of years ago, we had a mental, we had some mental health goals, but they ended up being too much about, we want to make sure the district does this. Yeah, and we'll do that, and we did that. But it wasn't necessarily a board goal that you could have a whole lot of action with, because it was more of just oversight type piece. So if there's anything specifically that you want to do as a board, learn about, that's what we should put here. And then, so that's just my two cents on that one. So let me think about that. Remember, this is about your growth, which is, which is why we have this one. This is about your governance and oversight. This one is about what you want to get better as a board.
And also, I mean, we did want to make some changes to this, the new board member packet this year, too. So that could definitely be a goal somewhere, so.
Yeah, and that fits really, when you think about the, I would say, board operations and development, that fits that, the new member packet.
So maybe almost like, kind of copying what we did with goal three last year, and then specifically, instead of just supporting potential new board members, this year, working, continuing to work on improving that new member packet. Does that sound?
And I feel like the, the staff spotlight has kind of become standard work. I don't think that needs to be on a goal anymore. We'll continue to do that, starting with our September meeting. We'll start bringing in staff to highlight during our work sessions, the work they've done. That seemed to be a real positive thing, as well as the monthly reports from building or departments during the regular meeting. I will continue with that. So I don't know that that needs to be a goal anymore, because that's, now it becomes standard work, you know? And because my evaluation, weekly school board updates from superintendent, that's on this work plan, I don't necessarily know if that needs to be a goal either, because that's, again, that's just standard work, is what we do. Because now, again, it's just part of our work now.
Yep. I think it needed to be a goal for a while, and now it's become standard, and so that's good.
Agreed. Agreed. So I have four different things written down. I have the board newsletter, and our condition, we got monthly communication, I've got engage in the community with the superintendent, I've got update and develop the new member packet, and then training on various board recommended topics in the course of the year. So those really are four different things that I've got written down already. So if there's more you want to look at, we certainly can. Otherwise, that's a reasonable place to be, too, I think. We don't want to create, there's no real reason to create stuff here just to create it. And we've got work here that we know we're doing, that, too. But I think this process, and Sherry mentioned our last work session, this process is really important that we do have, even if it's only a couple of goals, it's really important that we're regularly reviewing our work as a board, together as a group. So we need to hear those comments, to hear the feedback, people are talking about, but can we get better as relationship-wise, work-wise? Because otherwise, if we don't, and we just do our thing, then, and we just, if we just live on the governance plan, don't have separate goals, then we don't have, we don't take that time to reflect as often as we could. So I think it's valuable. But I can help, I can, we can work together and get that out to board members in one of the next few updates to think about and reflect on, and then take action at the next board meeting.
Do those four topics sound sufficient? Okay, good. Thank you. All right, so the next one is elementary facilities discussion follow-up.
Yeah, so, so thank you for the, the time this evening, talk more about this. I don't have a lot to update you on as far as stuff, stuff goes, if you will. But, you know, if you recall from our last conversation, we were talking about where we want to go next with this conversation, with this facility discussion. And one of the things that I have heard loud and clear from the board is we're just, we're not confident that the community would be supportive of the ideas that we have. As a board, we're not 100% confident that we're supportive of the ideas that we have. And so as I started thinking about what a couple of our options are, one of the things that's been missing, and I think I said this to you in June, or maybe May, whenever I talked to you about this, is really, the one piece of information we don't have is will people vote for it? Will people, will people like it or not? And so we talked about what our next steps could be. Before we decide that we are not really comfortable, we don't know what people will say, let's just go to Plan B, I would like to, with the board's, with the board's approval, move forward with a community engagement process. I call it a survey at its most surface level, but really, to figure out specifically what people think about the K6 plan. Because if you recall in our last survey, which was May of '22, the question was, would you support an addition onto WIS, which would create a K6 building, or a remodel of Hartley? And then they were two different dollar values, so there wasn't really a great way to parse out what I do like about this, what I don't like about this. And, and I think it was one of our very first conversations there, and you pointed out that addition word versus that remodel word, that really has people wondering, what do you need more space for? I mean, what do you, that kind of thing, get people messed up in terms of what they're thinking. So I think about, we're really creating a new K6 building with that intermediate school as the base would potentially be the idea. And so what I would propose is that, starting in late August, and why late August? Because the August 17th board meeting, I would ask you to approve this plan, so I could move forward with it or not. I would essentially do an information campaign with the community. Right now, my list of community groups to meet with is at, is at 48 and growing. And get out there and talk to folks, and essentially do, for those of you who've been around it before, well, you all have, because you've all, you've all been through this before, you see what a pre-election campaign or information blitz looks like from a district. Essentially doing that with the sense of, here is what we have proposed, that we're thinking of right now. But instead of casting a ballot right now, we ask you to, we ask you to give us your feedback on this survey. We find out what you're really thinking about this idea. And I'm going to show you in just a minute, I'll get up and move over there, and I'll show you the slides. But essentially, what I would do is with my leadership team, we create a plan, where we would go visit many, many groups in the community and have a conversation with them to say, it's kind of the, the hour and a half meeting I gave you in May, in the 10-minute version. And say, here's the five-minute version. So here's what we've got going on, here's what we're thinking about. Because one of the things I was really concerned about was sending a survey out that, to the best of our ability, we can't control how much people read it. If I could send all the information in that packet, that's five pages long, what, it's this much dumb money? No, I couldn't do that, right? Which may be the answer, anyway. But if I go sit in front of somebody at their employer and say, can you give me just five minutes of your time? Here's what the district is, is talking. I personally am thinking is, this is something the district needs to consider. Here's our survey, give us your feedback. Then we have the opportunity to maybe get more than 400 responses, to feel more comfortable with what the feedback of the community is. And then if the answer is supportive, then we maybe have a sense together as this group about whether or not we should move forward or not. If the answer is, if it's not favorable, okay, then some of our board who right now thinks we should move forward has to rethink, okay, I didn't have a right read on that. And we go out through and get that conversation. The risk is actually very minimal, in my opinion. It doesn't cost us any money, other than time and, and a little bit of postage for stuff that we already have, because, I'll talk to you about the procedure here in a moment here. But essentially, I want to share with the community, here's what this plan is, get in front of people, answer some questions. And then, again, rather than being a ballot, here's the survey, you can get feedback on. So let me show you what the slides, this is a draft. And I'll put this in an email to you all tomorrow, just because, whatever reason why I'm doing it now, is because if there's anything I'm missing on these slides, I would love to have your feedback as, as board members. And so, if I go to the, sorry, how to use this machine? so essentially, summary of the current facilities, none of this is going to be new information. There's all slides you've seen before. Current facility status, status, no misinformation, this is also stuff you've seen before. Accessibility to our district fields and sites. Could be some of the new childcare. There's what I currently, just a couple of pictures of the current Hartley experiences look like. Not going to be related or bring any points, just here's what it is. Some of the things we looked about. Opening of site visits, we saw. Some of the things we prioritized as important things. That piece. Potential design space for your usage is a big deal there. What the proposal would be. Baby, toddler, childcare, 36 million dollar building. Here's what the cost would be. Making it very clear that we would have some extra school tax credit there, but bottom line is that it could just be what it is. Current school tax and SICA is what it is, for that piece. And then, the next page, child court tax, and that would be. And that's, again, being very straightforward with the law, current taxes. Here's what the interest would be there.
One thing, while talking about all this with the community, you know, we talk about what it'll do to the homeowner's taxes. I had a lot of business owners say, but what will it do to my business?
Yep, very good. So that's commercial, is that second, is that second moved down? Oh, that's second box down.
So it's residential, then?
I see that, yeah.
Yep, good, good question, yeah. And this, this will be more legible when we get into that whole cut going on. I tried to copy and paste this to take it along there, Collins, it did work. That's why I'm, in concept, you get the concept.
There's also been a lot of confusion in the community when I've talked to people about the K through six out there. They're under the impression that it's a full, complete, new building. And I, and they're like, oh, it's an addition onto the existing. I'm like, yeah, it's, it would be essentially, I mean, it's not going to be a brand new. It's going to be, I mean, it's going to be new, but like, it's not a separate building than what's already out there. And that's what they're thinking, that there's going to be another building out there.
There's a current area, it's rules of base, we'll put here as that first bullet point. And then also, right in this, right in here is this. So the opportunity to see, look at the diagrams, this is the first, the concept, that piece, how it looks. So here are some of the positives that we can think of. Nothing that, yeah, nothing is new for you, efficiency in operations. There's that pocket K6 facilities, boost accessibility, maybe a school tax credit, you know, several. There's also some very real challenges. And I, I think it's really important that A is out there. Yep, it's an investment, I give you the bottom lines of A, there's taxes. Like, there's no, in my first, in my nine o'clock hotel room version, it says, there's no sugar content. It just is what it is, the cost is there. Took the word sugar content. But it's just kind of, here's what it is. We have a vacant building, we have to decide what to do with it. Sell it for development or repurposing, and the congestion at the campus location is something we've talked about, challenges. That, so I put a couple of points under there, but some options could be what it is. But like we talked about in our last work session, or the meeting, I don't remember if it was the meeting or the work session. But the bottom line is that it will be something you'll have to work. There's no new rules to be built, or nothing else to do. But that's why I'm putting it here, because I want to, if it really is a deal with the community, they will find out, through this process. That piece here. I did search some other options here. You could ask for a small bond to repair what's needed. I have some years there. We could build a new, something at the Hartley site, a little higher cost there. And the ultimate goal is, is long-term stability and efficient operations. Primary goal, that piece there. So they are options. And so then basically, our feedback is requested of what you think. And I'll link that FAQ page into here eventually. Before we start the survey, and I just did a brief, a brief move, sort of that looks like. Strongest support, support, and I took, I purposely did not do a new trip, or in the middle. Take a side on this one, if you want to, if you want to participate. And then, I put down here, hopefully this is going to be helpful for us. This is where I might need some more help here over the next couple of weeks, is are there other boxes I'm missing? I put in here, why do you support or not support the proposed plan? Please check all that apply. Is it too expensive, am I worried about the traffic congestion? Do I think the current building is just fine? I wouldn't propose any bond at all at this time, so I know that, it's just, you're not convincing me. All those kind of things we could, we could parcel, to find out if there's, if there's things I'm missing there. That'd be helpful for the board, let me know that. So you get, brand new as we want, on that piece. And then, then of course, is there anything else you want us to know, what describes you as a community member? What's your role? And again, if I'm missing anything, please, please feel free to let me know, and within the next few weeks, I can modify this accordingly. Before we come to approval, later this month. And then, we go back to here. What this, what this would look like is basically, I was, with the leadership team, speaking to the groups. You know, you have your role or your presentations, you have your, your businesses in town, you have your PTOs.
Could you go back one slide, please? One more? I guess, another one yet? But was the one about how would you describe yourself?
Oh, the survey? That's in the survey.
Of the survey. Okay. Could we have something on there? And I'm not saying this would be the correct term, but a member of the cultural community, farm community?
Sure.
Because you've got business owner on there, right?
And they're all, check all that apply. So you could put more than one on there if you, you know. So good.
Again, I don't know exactly how you'd phrase it, but.
Sure, sure. So basically, getting out, providing information, answering questions, requesting feedback. Back-to-school events, newspapers, social media. We could consider, as people like to get things in the mail, considering, you know, the post-game community, I does. Want to access this information, it gives survey feedback. I think when I go talk to places, write paper copies. If you want to reply, a paper copy would be presented back with me, or turn in the school office. Or even, or even, I saw your presentation, or I saw your information. Call, call Caitlin and say, hey, here's my input, here's my responses. So try to make it as, as comprehensive as possible, that anybody can, can apply if they so choose. That would be the goal, we need to get that guy. And there's 15 of us on the leadership team. And so the expectation would be all of our leaders are also contributing to this conversation. And so I think it's manageable to get out this week to groups. And I think I want it to be, I want it to be great. I want it to be, hey, if you've got five employees, I want you to hear this, because it's really important you hear this from us. It's really important you hear the information. And you can disagree with it, you can tell us you don't like the idea. That's why we're asking, because we want you to shape the future of SICA, shape the future of our schools. And so that's where I think right now, what I'm asking the board right now, is just off the top of your head, if this is a terrible idea, please tell me and I will move forward. Otherwise, I'll continue to refine this, bring this to the August board meeting for final approval. And then we'll kick it off that next Monday and go from there. And the reason why I say, tell me if you don't like the idea, is because the other option is, we could be considering a smaller bond to do just some repairs and upkeep and catch up on LTFM. And I think that if this comes, but I think we could at least do this work. Take me another eight weeks or so to get this stuff done. So then, the board then might feel, if this comes back unfavorable, which it very well may, we have to be realistic with ourselves, then we have a better opportunity to have that conversation. I started picking apart, Matt and Colin and I were talking about, which projects do we pick? What will we do first, what will we not do for that smaller bond? And, you know, we talked to the facility community about some different ideas we could have to not have to do one big project or another project. But I think that comes after we find out if our, if our community is going to really go for this or not. And if, or if the board says right now, no, this is a no-go, just don't, don't spend the time on it, I'm okay with that too. But I think this could be a very valuable exercise for us. And as a board, we're not, we're not, again, in, in alignment in terms of how we feel we could move forward. And one thing that might help us make that decision is, what does the community think? And if we really kind of beat down the bushes, like we say, and we get some feedback in the next, you know, two months or so, that might help the board to really know, yep. Somebody might be sitting there going, yep, I was right. And someone's sitting there going, well, I guess I have to rethink my thinking, because there's 2,000 responses now. And here's what we've got with that piece too. So I'm looking for feedback now, if there's any reason not to move forward, what do you think of the idea? We could talk more about what the board's role is in all this, but I think right now, primarily the board's role is to listen. Let us as the administration get the, get it out there. Because if you come to one of those means with me, then you're selling something. And right now, I'm giving you an idea, which is a little bit of a sales pitch, but the board's deciding. So I'm kind of your minion, if you will, kind of going out and communicating this going on. And then, people can disagree with me, and you can say, I haven't made a decision yet. I don't have all the information yet. And from a board perspective, that's a good spot to be in. So that's my, that would be my rationale why the administration kind of does this. And we, if we do decide to go to election, then the board starts getting with me on some of those, those community, community meetings we have going that way. To help share the information with that, so. That's what I wanted to propose to you this evening. Get your feedback on and see if there's any reason to do something different, or if that makes sense.
I think the second question may almost be as important, or a very important one, because that may tell us why, why there is support or not support, or may drive some of the questions out. If we do something smaller, what are people thinking about, why? So I support, I really like the second question.
Do you have a copy of that, those questions, right now?
Yeah. Click back to it, yeah.
Or will you send those to us?
I'll send them to you tomorrow in email.
Okay.
Well, send them to you also, I'm living out here, for sure. This one here? The why you feel the way you do?
Yeah, that's all.
And the first one was what?
The first one was, do you support it or not?
Support the K6?
Yeah.
As the only option?
Can you scroll back? I'm sorry, I know you just walked back there and had to make, get extra steps in. Can you scroll to the top again?
Yep.
Okay. That's, so it's just those three questions?
Correct, yeah. It's very short and direct. And, and this is the first survey since I've been in the district that hasn't been options. And I feel like this is the time where we kind of want to say, this is the option, because, or this is the option to add good feedback on. Because we were 50/50, give or take a few points, when we gave people the two options. And there also was the added layer of addition, of different costs for each one. So we didn't, we probably didn't do as good a job as we could have of figuring out why people chose the different ones the last time. So if this is a no-go, then we have to think about what the next plan is, which could be any number of things, right?
I like the idea of survey. Would I would like to ask if school board could be involved in those 48 groups, the, you know, establish, no establishment, how we, you know, how you define those groups? If school board could be a part of the review of the list and then provide?
I would ask the school board to give me ideas to put on the list, yes.
Bullet points of, are you talking bullet points of why we need it, or?
I think you're talking.
Who the list is.
Who to talk to.
Who we're going to approach.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think everyone, yeah, every idea of who to put on the list is fine.
Because you want it to be as comprehensive as possible.
Yeah, but the answer's not going to be that I'm not going to go talk to a particular group.
No, I just would like to see, and you know, what is on the list already, and then if you have other ideas, just give it to you.
Absolutely, perfect.
And also.
Very good.
The options you had, you know, that people can either go on website, put the link, or call, or drop the letter. I would like to see the plan, how, what you got, or if somebody comes to the office and, you know, give a paper, how, how you ensure that everybody will, that you will get all those answers, either by phone, especially phone, if they called, you have designated line, that somebody will answer, or, you know, just, I would like to see that, tell a little more details, how.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Oh, can staff answer this? I would just include that in your?
Oh, yes, staff, yeah.
Like in that box, that last question? Yeah. What applies to? Because I mean, obviously not all of our staff lives here, I mean, that's, so they wouldn't all be, they wouldn't all be able to vote on something like this, but.
Right.
Their input is still valuable, but, and they, a lot of, they have kids here, and you know.
Staff in our district, staff out of our district.
Yeah, that'd be interesting, yeah. Yeah, staff who lives in district, staff who lives out of district, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it might be interesting to see the responses based on, the people who are identified that both as this type have this support or not support. Those who are this type have this and not do or not.
Gives us a lot of opportunity to, to disarray the data and see what we're looking at.
Do you have another comment, Alyssa? No.
Yeah, it, it is one of those things that, to your point, Adita, where we want to get that procedure all the way. And that's why I'm giving ourselves, you know, I talked about it last month. Then two weeks now, I'm giving you this, now two weeks, I'm going to give you the, the all-the-way plan. As opposed to just get it out there. Because I racked my brain about how do we get a survey out that people will actually read the information? And this still may not work, for every individual, every place we go. But we'll do the best we can to get it out there. And I would say it may not work, because I think there might be a, somebody who might not be in one of the groups to go talk to, who may not read the whole document. But that's just okay, we'll, we'll get as much as we can. I think we have a, we have a very strong motivation to find out really. You all, as a board, have worked really hard on this in the last couple of years. To, and to give you the last piece of information, or another piece of information, to feel like, I'm confident really in how the, what the community is thinking about this, I think will be valuable to you.
Basically, you're looking from us tonight to be like, yes, let's continue, let's move forward with this? We need to formally approve whatever the survey is at some point?
So that'll come at the August meeting.
Okay.
Yes, and, and that's intentional, so that we formally approve it, so that all of you have an input on that and feel like you've got that going on. And then we know that there's no, there's no predetermined outcome of the survey. So whatever the results are, the board still has a decision to make after that. But then it gets to be, okay, this is the next step in our process. Part of one of the, and for me, as your superintendent, I just want to make sure we're continuing to feel like we're moving forward and not feeling like we just are going to leave it alone. So I think this is a huge action step in what's the next, what's the next phase. So I think it, it also advertises to our community by doing a formal vote in August, that this is what you've got coming. And the board's approved that.
Is this 36 million, just that building, or is there other things pocketed for the district?
35.1 is the building. And another 900,000 is the childcare classrooms here for infant, toddler, childcare. And disability, accessibility out to our back, back lots, our back fields and sites over at the.
Is it Mankato that's just looking to do something with childcare? I just saw something, I think it was in the Mankato Free Press.
I couldn't tell you. I know that we.
It was an area school district, and?
It's, it was Mankato, they were going to attach that to their upcoming bond question, yes.
And they were talking about childcare needs, and including that in their ask.
I think there was an article on that Free Press today, is what it was, so.
We have, so we currently offer childcare for age 36 months and up. And we don't offer infant, toddler, childcare. And for, it's, last estimate we had was about $200,000 to modify the classrooms to be the code for infants. And we have some spaces, we can use that here in this building, that we could do. So that's the, what that process is. And then we had a speaker come to us, probably a year ago, maybe more, talk about wheelchair accessibility to those fields in the back. And so we've got some opportunity to build that in as well.
A couple of questions there. Is there ongoing, when you start that, that childcare from zero to three, the rules are always ever-changing? So is that an additional, like, do we have anything allocated in for an additional cost for always like upkeeping and keep, you know, keeping those standards they require?
Well, it'd be our regular operational cost, yeah.
And it would be covered by the revenue?
There's a fee, yeah.
For that, likely, okay.
Yep.
And then my other question was, of that 35.1 million going to, like, the K through six, and then you've got that other 900,000. I know there were a couple other large ticket items that were on the numbers that you showed us previously, like some roof repairs. And the track, are those, that wouldn't be included in there, we just have to figure those out too, or?
The roofing, well. The roofing, well, the roof would be addressed at, at, because there wouldn't be a roof, you gotta hardly...
Isn't that here though, too? This, this building was on that agenda?
Correct, that, that's not included in that dollar value.
Okay.
No, this was just basically...
So that's something that we would, okay.
Yeah.
And the track is not included in this?
Track's not included in this either, no. Though we still have big-ticket LTFM items to work through. They just are much more manageable if you take certain things off the list.
And then that, so the up to three years old, is there different requirements of the staff versus the three and up?
They have to be certified, yeah, to work for, with kids that age. Yeah, which we can, we have, we have teachers that are birth to grade three teachers, so we can work through that right now anyway. So we have that opportunity. The other thing we were thinking too, is we could set that up in such a model that it would be a, something that Taylor Corp does over in Mankato. They have, staff gets first dibs at those childcare sites. And then if they have openings, then it opens up to the community as well. So it could be a big, a big recruitment piece to us too, that we have some childcare available for some of our younger families.
And I hope it won't be from zero month, it will be...
Well, not right, well, yeah, yeah.
Please. My mom's be home at this point.
Well, right, right.
And then what capacity would you anticipate? Like, I know that's probably a ways off, but what are you thinking for numbers, zero to three? Like, how many classrooms and...
Well, right now, there's three classrooms that we have targeted that could be potentially remodeled.
Okay.
And used for that purpose. So I don't know the childcare specs that much enough to know exactly how many kids that would serve. But it would be, it would be a start for us, for sure. And remember, we're not trying to take over the childcare market. We're trying to just provide an extra opportunity in our community that is a big need.
Do you know in our surrounding communities who's doing this?
Cass and Manorville.
Yep.
That's the only one, that's the only one that I'm aware of that offers this.
Gene's been having talks.
Yeah, and Mankato is discussing it, it's becoming a conversation.
And how's Cass and Manorville doing with that?
They love it.
Okay.
They love it, the community loves it. It's an extra opportunity, they're constantly thinking about ways they can, they can grow, but...
The program that they're on, I just actually seen this Tuesday. One of my sales reps' kids go there, and when the kid goes to the bathroom, he knows, and the kid goes out from nap and gets up from a nap, he knows, all day long. So it's not much work for their staff to update it. When they eat, when they...
Yeah, it's run essentially like a childcare center, like it would be, yeah.
Part of this is, your, the presentation kind of listed that, but maybe it means that in that little one, that slide you had that said, here's what that's going to be for. Just make sure that's clear, that what's included, what's part of the school, what's this? Us, us asking that means that, also make sure that's clear.
Yeah, so one thing I'm thinking about, because I practiced this, you know, in front of the mirror the other day, to see how long it would take me to get through that slideshow. It took me eight minutes to get through it. So I don't, I don't want it to be any longer than that. And so I thought we would err on the side of adding more to the FAQ, and stuff on the frequently asked questions piece, so people can answer some of those additional questions that we can get, get through if they ask, work through that. Because I'm, I'm sensitive of not, of my own propensity to talk, and not wanting it to be a 15-minute presentation when I go to talk to people.
I think people appreciate that, they can ask questions afterwards if...
Correct.
They still have them.
Right.
If it's too long, they won't even get the initial stuff, so just get it in the show.
Yeah, yeah. So when I go to the first few places, then they'll hear that it's too long and they won't invite me in.
All right, so we are supportive of continuing? All right, and then you'll share, and obviously we can get feedback in the next couple of weeks about...
Yeah, I will, I'll actually, I'll send both of these documents to you in an email tomorrow morning. And that way, if there's things I'm missing on that checked list, or if there's other pieces on the slideshow that you think I'm missing, or you want to clarify of the language, please let me know. Because I want it to be as representative of what we're thinking as possible. And I think we just, the goal is feedback, the goal is to really figure it out. And I think, based on our last conversation, our last work session, asking the, asking the community is going to be the way to find that out. And we're not, we're not going to go to a ballot this time, but this is the next best thing that I can think of.
All right, thank you. All right, last item on the agenda, then vision card update.
Yeah, and this is a relatively quick one, probably. So as I was looking at, first of all, I look, I go back to the 22, 23 vision card. The only thing that was not built in yet was the MCA scores. We don't have those officially yet, so I'll bring those to you, otherwise that, that vision card remains the same as when you last saw it. But what I have for you now is the draft of what the 23, 24 vision card looks like. And it's a little bit word-intensive, how we start figuring out what the pattern is. So we think about our, our strategic, our focus areas of learning for all, community engagement, effective, efficient operations. But we took that and we modeled it using the desired daily experience piece, of what are our students, staff, and expanded families want to experience. So the measures, and we have a little bit of those focus areas embedded in each of these areas. So students report feeling safe and secure, we want to know how they feel about that. We want to know what students annual attendance is. This was a really important one. Students grade nine through 12 are on track to graduation by credit accrual on a trimester basis. And I know that they're on track to graduate, we're measuring that. But these baselines have been really acceptable and progressing, they're all based on some of the things we already see happening in our buildings. We may change this away from on a trimester basis to by credit accrual, because our ALC doesn't work on trimesters. So we want to make sure that the ALC card could say ex-mesters, the high school card could say trimesters. They're on track to graduate, for that piece. This is reflective of the new reading law. It used to say they had to read on grade level five, grade three, now it's K eight, they allow them to read at grade level, which is certainly something we want to see happening. So we're looking at that, for that piece. So our student measures would be a little bit of safe and welcoming, and some of that student achievement learning for all, different pieces for most schools. For staff, again, if you can visualize that bottom left-hand corner of that desired daily experience piece, feel valued and supported as a staff member, want to feel like I'm part of the team, part of what's going on. Now we're going to measure that, in this case, one way, one way we're going to measure that is retention over a three-year period, if you can stay. People feel like they want to come and work here. Now, Matt's particular vision card might have an annual goal, from a department perspective of retention and turnover. From a district perspective, we're looking over a three-year period, what's our retention rate? Because we know that life happens for people. Not every person leaving is because of, I met my boss, sometimes my family got moved, they had a relocation, what can we do? Or I was asked to find a different place to work, those are all those kind of things that happen sometimes. So three-year period makes sense. And this number here, some of these numbers are a little bit preliminary, because we need to get some of the baseline of what our actual numbers are for everything there. We might hope that we have more than 65% retention, absolutely, mostly we've got to go on from there. Building culture, we're going to say heard and valued, want to know that our staff feels like they have a voice and what's happening. And we're going to do some survey work on that to find out from our staff. I work in a district that provides, this is going to carry over from our current, our current vision card. I work in a district, this is using the staff's language, I work in a district that provides relevant, high-impact PD. That's that 30-day feedback that we have going on right now with our PD, finding out if it feel like it's relevant, and it's positive with that piece too. So we've got some achievement goals for our kids, but our staff feeling like they work in a high engagement with the responsibility, as well as feeling safe and valued. Matt, would you mind, or should I, should you scroll it up? Excellent, buddy. Save us some steps. Yeah, just follow the experience. So then from a family perspective, this is desired and expensive families. My family is engaged with my child, its teacher, school staff, me as a whole. What does that look like based on engagement? And we're looking at measures of that, the school contacts, event attendance, portal logins, those kind of things. We've went, we've actually gone round and round and round with how to measure that one, because it's so different for each individual family. You know, I would be a disengaged father if the measurement was my high school kids' conference attendance, because I don't need to go to those most times, because the parent board helped me with anything to do. And I'm constantly logged into the portals, which we measure it that way, that way. So that's what we, finalizing that in the next few weeks with that. This one's really important to me. Our family's needs are met when they visit our buildings. When someone comes to a school, do they get what they need? And some things we'll be implementing this fall in a few different spots, will be an exit office survey. So essentially, when you go into a building, you sign in, they'll do that quickly on a, on a device. And when you sign out, it'll be a quick, did you get what you came for, will we have ready or warmly? You know, that kind of thing, maybe just two or three quick questions. We'll do that all year, we'll do that a few times in the fall, a few times in the spring. I kind of get a sense, yeah, but I...
I got one from the wrestling tournament, we need diaper changing tables in the bathrooms.
Oh, there you go. Excellent. Good to go. So we'll find out what's happening there. And this one's really important too, and it's, it's actually in the families category, because that's where the feedback came from. But it's really directed to our students, where our students need real-world experiences. And we want to measure that per trimester, the kids are getting, I've got to put the L back in there, or the L got taken off. Real-world experiences, not, we want world experiences with that piece for that. So we want to define that, that'll look different for a third grader, and for a 11th grader. But our buildings will be managing that to make sure our kids get that authentic experience. And we in education love to use the word authentic. Parents don't use that word, they say real-world. That's what we got in our feed, our survey was, our feedback was real-world experiences. That's why we incorporated that in there. And then there are, of course, some measures for the vision card. They're from our retired district, they impact the whole district. Our facilities are safe, clean, accessible, and we have good facilities, that's why we want to make sure we're checking that out. Some internal auto devices that we get from our partners with IAA in the most particular, the health department and such, that we can turn the audit to make sure we're safe, clean, accessible. Are we communicating as a district? This is one where it's a little bit of flipping the script to kind of what we were talking about earlier, Alyssa, with, I can't always control if they're going to read it. But I can control when I get it out there. And so what can I do to get it out there? You saw our communication plans last fall, it was a new thing that we did, that we'll continue for this year. I would, nursing situations, we always want to be as prepared as we possibly can for any crisis that would happen. And so we're constantly, every year, learning more and more about how to deal with emergency crises that comes up. So we'll be checking on those things. And then the authentic partnerships and student involvement, you know, you put that on there so that it would not be lost in translation, it's a next-year measure. Because it really comes into piggybacking off of the old screens, and so that's why that's on there for that. So we're going to work through that with the operational plan next week with the district leadership team, and then finalize some of these official measures. So that for late August, early September, probably September work session, depending on where we are with other agenda items. I could bring these to you, and you can as a, as a board say, that's, you know, kind of what we're working on, you can approve the vision card for this next school year, and do the operational plan and see which things missed. But I kind of liked this because you could see the four focus areas that it threw out, but it's not isolated. Because this, family's needs are met, that's the efficient operation, to make sure we have enough staff to get things done. As well as community engagement, as well as safe and welcoming, it's all along. I'll memorize redundant work. Tonight, the, the goal tonight was to give you this neat peek of that, so you know the format's going to look like, if you have any thoughts, do you like this format, do you not like this format?
Can you email that to us?
Yes. It's still in draft form, it's certainly not...
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, can you still email it to us?
Yeah. We're far enough along, I didn't dare do this the last couple of years to make everybody nervous, but we're far enough along now to put intervention back in some under. To recall from the last couple of work, vision cards, it kind of started here and went over. And I think as a leadership team, we're comfortable enough with this concept now that we're here. I'm sure they're going to call it out, I'm just saying, this is who we are.
Can I just ask a question? And it's probably just I'm not understanding the numbers, you know, when you say the level four, 90% or less, between less could be 65%, right?
So... 65% or less?
At level one, but then if you say 90% or less, it's 90, 80, 70, 65?
So I probably have to put 75 to 79 here.
Yeah, I would prefer to do buckets because it's confusing.
Now, okay, that makes sense.
But it's 80% or less, it's, again, you are not really, it's between 75 to 80, 85 to, you know, all those...
Now we're getting some of these marks up there too, so, makes sense?
And it's just me, just please pick up that foot?
No, in fact, I'm, now that you're saying that, I'm wondering if there's a new copy that has that in there. I did pull it tonight, because I know we talked about that too. So thank you for saying that. Anything else with this slide? And I will, then what I will do with this is, the operational plan, we'll work with that through DLT next week, we'll finalize some of this. And then either via an update, if I can do it via, just the weekly update, or in, in late August, early September, you'll get these documents in final form for your approval, with that one. And we'll start measuring.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Eric? Okay. Our next meeting is August 17th, same time, same place, same people. All right, thank you, everyone.